We'll start with the gender amendments. Which I have.
And I was wondering if you wanted a negotiations update?
That's my.
Was that it?
Yeah. So, and we probably want to talk about that in executive session. That was the only one I had. Okay, so on to public comments and possible future board meeting agenda. Okay. Our next, our future meeting dates, the next Highgate Board Meeting is December 13th, 6:30 here. The next Franklin Northwest Supervisor Union Board Meeting is also here, December 5th at 6:30. On to the consent agenda, accepting the board minutes from, I don't have the date. October.
Twenty-fifth. Thank you, October 25th.
No, we have one before that too.
October 11th?
Yes, October 11th. And I actually have some changes for the October 11th one.
It's like the old draft agenda. So you're looking at October 11th?
Yeah, under.
Of course I have the wrong ones in front of me.
Under Facility Assessment Update, which was under Old Business, at the end of it, we don't have anything in there about, we've made a motion to allow Laura to pursue bids for the assessment. And Ryan was the first, at least was the second, and it went four to one with the vote.
Motion to allow Laura to?
To pursue bids for the facility assessment.
Okay. And I got the votes.
And then the next thing, under Old Business, Act 46 Update Review of Class Action Lawsuit, at the end, it says that, uh, this is kind of nitpicky, but it says that Ryan was the first and Steve was the second, it was actually the other way around. And then it also says the vote was four-one, that Richard Flint abstained, it was actually Richard voted no. I think that's all I had.
I will get those. I think that was one where we just recorded.
Right.
I will get those too.
So, I'll accept a motion to accept the October 11th board minutes with those changes.
So can I? Sorry. That's what happens when you're running behind and all day has been like.
Yeah, I hear that. So, let's see, motion. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries three-zero.
Yeah, was that motion to approve both sets of minutes?
No, just the October 11th. On to, uh, accepting the October 25th minutes. I didn't find anything off on those. I don't know if anybody else did, but. So I'd entertain a motion to accept the minutes from October 25th.
Uh, would it need a year mark?
Um, come ahead.
Can you accept the minutes if you?
Yes. I'll make that motion.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, saying aye by saying aye.
Uh, aye.
Close. Motion carries three-zero. Alright, on to the principals report.
Uh, I'm just gonna quickly do the math menu portion on the front and then Chris will take it from there. I thought you just made, and the reason is, I just wanted you to know the what, part of the way in which we spent the election day was, um, using this guy Christian Quartermarché, I think is how you say it, in good French, or maybe, it's not that good. Anyway, uh, he was originally scheduled to work with us in October, but with that time, we were able to move him to the election day. And he spent, um, math menu, I don't know if, you know, Chris, if, you know, you're hearing about it at home at all or not, but it's, we talked a little bit about it before, but it's, uh, just a way to, which to teach math within our existing structures already. But, um, it's been very well received in the grade levels that it's been implemented. It's a lot about choice. You know, it's just like, it's as, as, the name implies, menu. But the real key is that, that there are some can-dos and some must-dos for each child. And that's based on their assessments, how well they've done in certain areas and how much they need in others. And so the teacher will design what we used to call in teaching stations. And, uh, but there's a lot more deliberate intentional planning going on. And kids will get kind of individual programs, like this is yours, here are your must-dos, and here are your can-dos. And so, um, they've got to take care of their must-dos, and then that gives them some choice. And, uh, it's really been quite enjoyable to watch and implemented. And it's also been very enjoyable to work with this, this, with Christian, he's been, he's been wonderful. So, uh, he's a great consultant. Uh, so he, he worked with the entire staff, uh, in the morning. And then each grade level scheduled half an hour times with them to let them know how it was going at their particular grade level implementation. And as with all kinds of new things, the level of implementation varies. We've got some grade levels that have taken and run with it. And, um, which is also why he wanted to meet with each group individually also. Uh, because some groups are working a little bit more slowly, a little more cautiously about implementation. But it's really about choice and engagement and meeting their needs. And so those are, those are three big areas. So, um, uh, we're pretty optimistic about it. And right now, since we're the first ones to be doing it in the district, this is kind of a Jen Hubbard, led initiative, I give Jen a lot of the credit. Uh, but because of that, um, uh, and the success we're having here, Christian is sending visitors from other schools that he's working with here. And Swanton is also going to come up and take a look at what we're doing with math menu. So, um, so we're hopeful that this is something that really is going to strengthen our work with math.
Just want to turn your attention to the first thing on the, on the principals report here, which is the makerspace for your academic proficiency. So, I mentioned this last week, but since last March, we've had a team meeting every two weeks or so to, um, plan to create a makerspace here at Highgate. We have a plan in place for the space and the tools. Uh, we're developing a plan for the staff training and the budgetary and logistical realities of just managing the space. The way we've been going about that is by learning how other schools have done it. Um, there's no kind of textbook on it, you gotta just find out how other people have done it and learn from their successes and mistakes. So we've been at all the makerspaces in Franklin County. And, uh, we have a field trip organized, um, for a couple of people from our task team, but also we'd like to invite the board on December 7th at 1:30. Steve is gonna be there at that time, um, and I want to extend an invitation to Richard and Chris and Lisa. If you are available, I know you all work, but if you're available, I think it'd be great to have you. BFA Fairfax does it better than any of the rest of the schools in Fairfield County, Franklin County do it. Uh, it's just, it's, it's great, and it's not because I used to work there. It's, it is legitimately a step above any other space that I've seen. And it's not just the space, it's the way they use it. They, they call, I think it's, in the elementary schools, Fridays are innovation days. Um, and you'll see if you come on the field trip what that looks like. And in the middle school, it's a different day of the week, is an innovation day. Um, and it's exciting, it is not, it's different. It's a different feel. The excitement in the room is palpable when kids are using this stuff and it's real life skills. So, if you're available to come, Friday, December 7th, 1:30 PM, BFA Fairfax Elementary School, we're gonna meet in the lobby. Um, there'll be a couple of staff members there, including myself, um, and Steve. So, if you are available, just shoot me an email, let me know you are coming, and I'll make sure to wait for you. We are gonna be sharing our proposal for, uh, a proposed budget for the space and where we would like to put it in Highgate next board meeting in December. So, that's something to, uh, look forward to and hopefully, if any, you get to see the, the day at Fairfax. Uh, before that, it'll be like one week before our budget proposal, so. Other item that's just really cool, that was fun, we've been reading, it's the second page, Positive Climate for Learning. I wrote a bunch on there about this, you don't need to read every word, but we've been reading the book Wonder as an entire school. Grades two through six have read the actual book Wonder. Grades K and one have read, there's a picture book that goes along with it by the same author. All, all about kindness, acceptance, empathy. It's a, it's a fictional story, but it's about a, a, a boy born with a real disease called Future Collins Syndrome. We have a separate task team, starting last year, met again every other week to set up a curriculum for our entire school to do as they read through this. Um, some of the activities have been creating a book of precepts, like values, and they're ordering their own book that can be made for free with this publishing company, and kids are illustrating it, which is great. We had a visit from an author and teacher who has Future Collins Syndrome, he was here a couple of weeks ago. Uh, his name is Sam Drazen, he was really inspiring. Um, and then today, actually, every kid in the school decorated a T-shirt that, one of the mottos of this book is choose kind, so every kid in the school decorated a T-shirt with choose kind. And they're gonna wear those T-shirts when we watch the Wonder movie as a culminating activity in a week, on Friday, before a break. And I want to especially thank the PTKO who contributed about $575 to T-shirts and fabric markers to make sure that every kid was able to decorate a T-shirt. We had about 60% of kids bring in their own T-shirts. Um, but we wouldn't have been able to do that activity without the PTKO, um, funding the second half of the T-shirts and the fabric markers. So, really appreciate that a lot, and it was, I mean, it was great today. Kids were, kids were having a lot of fun. And we'll throw some pictures up on the Facebook page, uh, as well, just to make sure people get to see it. So that's just a fun one.
Question on that, was that a, they all did it together or?
Sorry, no, they, I should have mentioned that, they did it with their buddy classrooms. So, sixth graders with younger, all the, all the older grades with all the younger grades, one classroom matched with a younger classroom. Couple pairs of brothers and sisters were, happened to be in the same buddy classroom and, uh, were matched up and it was pretty, pretty cool seeing them, so. Real feel-good stuff. Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, that's it. Uh, shoot me an email please if you're gonna come on the 7th.
How much notice do you need?
One minute notice.
Sometimes that's how it works.
I was gonna say, I haven't committed to going, because I have no idea what I'm gonna be doing.
Hope for rain, huh, on that afternoon?
Well, I never hope for rain, but yeah.
Then you get indoor work.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, that's, that was it.
That's it.
Perfect. On to business report. Uh, check warrants.
Alrighty. Want back? It's each of these.
Those are, well, those are bills, I think we just need the amount off.
Those amount, right?
Yep, yep.
Which is, uh, $975,891.73.
That's for October, right?
Uh, motion to accept check warrants.
And with the motion. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, saying aye by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion carries three-zero.
Hey, you also have in front of you a draft two of the fiscal year 20 budget. Primarily, uh, it's only assessments that have changed. I've updated the early childhood, the central office, and, um, the special ed, which includes, um, psychology and speech, uh, costs, um, in all of your assessment lines. If you turn to page five, that's where you'll see your, the special ed and the central office assessments. ECP, I think was on page two. Um, but staying on page five, you'll notice, um, a lot of zeros in the proposal column. We're, we're shifting to showing all of the netted, um, revenues that are being received at the SU level and consolidating those into one line. We've sort of been trans, you know, um, progressing this in stages since, um, all the special ed costs are incurred at the Supervisory Union level. But, um, truly the state is looking for us to, to represent it this way when we report to them, so we're trying to make that transition. And so, um, I showed you the variance all the way to the right of, um, about $55,000 less than draft one for your special ed costs. So I tried to, you know, give you a comparable there that you can compare from your last draft. Central office, uh, is up slightly from the current year, um, I think it's less than 2%. And ECP, which is on page two, which is your early childhood assessment, um, we will not be having expansion grants programs. And, and the grant will be ending this fiscal year, and so, um, there's also some, uh, different support models happening with that program. Um, your local share will end because you won't have the, the local 33% of that classroom here anymore either. So a lot kind of going into that variance, um, from the current year. But looking at about a $10,000 increase overall from the prior year. Again, draft ones, so things can still change. Our best guess at this point in time.
We've had a request from the, um, our business director that we need a new tractor. So he wants to see if we can fit that into the budget for FY '20.
So typically we lease for a purchase like that? I haven't seen any numbers or anything.
Take the 40s, we can lease the last one.
Typically, the schools within our SU lease for tractors?
But, and VU's isn't.
I, every tractor purchase, I've been involved in our SU in the last eight years has been a lease, but I can't speak to those.
Because it says lease at, at, at VU, but I don't think it is. And, and I know ours here isn't.
I know Sheldon is and Swanton is. Typically for a purchase like that, because you're talking probably $20,000, you would spread the cost over, you don't have to if you want to absorb it all.
I wish.
What if you did that tractor for $20,000?
Third-hand, maybe or something?
Yeah.
All the bids he has are, are between 34 and 38,000, but that's with everything, tractor. He's got a salt spreader on there, back blade. Doesn't have a snow blower, so must be they're playing on not using a snow blower anymore. I'd have a chance to talk to him.
Where were the tractors, did he store?
Where he, he stored and shipping the container down.
Okay, I'm happy to, uh, how would you like me to incorporate that into the budget, Richard?
Well, can you see if, it can, I'm, I'm pretty sure MBU's was purchased, I don't know, what's?
Well, but they're, they have a $15 million budget, so bottom line.
I know, but, but, but I know ours was too, but I, I don't know, is a way to go lease, I don't, I don't know.
So lease rates, um, have been going up, so they're not as good of a deal as they used to be. We, um, if you wanted to purchase one outright, you'd have to ask the voters for approval specifically for that purpose. A lease, you're allowed to do just based on the board's approval, so that's the difference. There's a non-appropriations clause in a lease and there isn't in a loan, so, um, that's why we say lease and not just take out a loan. I can tell you if it's 35,000, um, it's, so 51,000 is 1% of your budget, so you would be, if you tried to incorporate that all into one year, which is not my recommendation, but it, you'd be, you know,
Cause that was all.
Adding a percent just for that.
Just like that.
So, probably worth.
I was also thinking, I mean, let's assume that if you got a John Deere, I know they have like the 0% for three years.
That's a purchase.
I know, on a purchase, on a purchase.
Oh, yeah.
Where we would be able to spread it out over three years instead of making payments.
If you could, if you get voter approval specifically for that, yeah.
Okay, so, so let me ask you, Laura, now, I'd like to find out about MBU's. I know you're saying it's a bigger budget, but, but how MBU did theirs? You know, because I, I'm pretty sure it's so much a year. And, uh, but, but, but I know I, I wanted to bring it up last meeting and I forgot, I, it said lease on there.
Yeah.
And, 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 uh, I, I didn't think we leased it.
Sorry.
So, we, the RAC department have just gone through this process. And with the three quotes we got, the lease, all three deal, it was more to, to lease, monthly payment than to own out, uh, over, over a 60 month.
Yeah, cause I, I think he actually got a quote on the exact same tractor you guys just bought.
Now, what's wrong with the old tractor?
Oh. You wanna talk to me?
Of course.
It's, it's worn out. It's, it, really, for what, what we got there tied, it, it wasn't built for what we're doing.
Absolutely, I've said that for three years.
You know, it's, it's just worn out, everything, last year it was, the bearings in the front were going, um, when we mowed the lawn, it's just, it's just too small for what we were doing here with blowing snow and, it's just, you know, and I think it's, uh, I think it's, it's gotta be,
Nine, ten?
Yeah, years old.
Yeah, it's old, I know that.
Yeah, you know, and, and it's not, it's really, uh, it's not made for a place this big. You know, it's made for a homeowner that's got a little 20-foot driveway, you know?
So, just to throw some butter in the water. So, in this budget, are you guys, are you guys still considering contracting out lawn mowing?
We, we haven't, we haven't talked about that for almost a year now. And, and I, I, as far as from buildings and grounds point, I think we've set that aside when we got it.
Cause where I'm going with that, Richard, is it doesn't make any sense for you guys to buy a big tractor like that.
If we're gonna.
Right.
And still expecting to mow lawns.
Right, well, I agree with you.
Buy it by either second-hit tractor or a smaller tractor and a zero turn, that you can, I mean, that tractor's not made to mow lawns, Sheldon just went through that scenario. And, uh,
Yeah.
Just not time efficiency and cost.
Right.
I'm not saying I'm, I'm in favor of contracting out lawn mowing services, because I'm not, but.
Yeah, I, we talked about it, I think when Dave was on, when we talked about it, I think it, it just got, finally, I think we decided there was a lot of things going on and it kind of got swept under the table.
So am I hearing that you want to look at what, one, check into what MBU did, whether they did a lease over a period of time or whether they purchased outright for probably payments over a couple of years? And, um, then bring it back to you, um, because we would need to have that on, uh, it'd have to go to the voters if we were gonna take out a loan, so I don't know how we could put it in this budget.
I know, I know, MBU didn't do that. So they, they did not take out a loan and ask voters to take out a loan, they either leased.
Or they had the money in the budget.
Or they had the money in the budget and used carryover or something.
Well, I, I think some of it, I wonder if some of it was our, uh,
Like carryover money, yeah.
Yeah, not, not carry, what's that other word?
Capital reserve?
Capital.
There you go.
They don't use capital reserve to buy equipment.
No, that's right, you said, so.
Probably carryover, if I had to guess, but I did email Anne Marie and Becky to ask.
Okay.
Okay, we'll find that out.
Maybe they leased and then bought it afterwards.
Usually it's a dollar payout at the end, and you, the lease rates are going up. And so you do end up paying a little bit more for the tractor, but you're not rolling the dice on if a voter's gonna approve purchasing a tractor, cause, you know, if.
They may say no.
So.
Right, they could say no and then you don't have a tractor, um.
So Laura, you're saying that you can't finance a tractor without, an article to purchase from them?
Not a, not a loan. You, because you, you can appropriate funds. I can't, you can't take out a loan and appropriate, paying the funds back over three years or five years without voter approval. A lease has a non-appropriation clause that if the money is not approved by the voters and the budget is not approved, then you can get out of the lease.
So, so another, like, like the tractor we got, because the price range is different, would that, because I don't think we took that to the voters.
Right, probably, you might have had, you might have bought it outright.
It was, or it was a lease.
No, it, it wasn't a lease.
Okay.
I don't think it, what, what it was, it, it wasn't this much money.
You're, you're in, in Highgate?
Yeah.
When did you buy it?
Uh, 10 years ago, nine, 10 years ago. I'm saying, I'm saying it was around 14,000 to 16,000, we paid for that tractor.
You might have just put it in the budget.
I'm pretty sure you leased it. I'll check, I will check.
I can.
We'll check, it's better than going around and.
Yeah, so we'll do a little research and then we'll talk about this again.
But it's something, at any rate, it sounds like we want to put some money in plant operations around that equipment, no matter how we pay for it. Got it.
Um, speaking of that though, I did want to draw your attention to one more thing in this budget draft that I think left it put in the last, and it's on, it's the very last lines on the last page, you'll see a new 5,100 debt service line. I'm approximating, um, about $10,000, um, and that would be year one of a bond payment, which will be interest only. So if this facility bond comes to fruition, I'm totally guessing at the amount, but I wanted to have something earmarked, so I threw a number in there. But if you're wondering what that, what that's for, that's what that is, you pay, um, interest only on year one of a municipal bond.
Now, Chris, should, should this page go to Laura? With, uh, with the, the.
You can all headbang to the.
Look at you.
Should this paper go to Laura or is that?
Typically the process is it would go to the principal and then what he,
Okay.
requests that I add into the budget is what I add.
Okay. So, so this should go to him? So it's building the grounds on the top, we talk to that, right?
I believe so, cause there's probably some prioritization or some other discussions that might come into play. I'm happy to run numbers and do those sorts of things, but.
But right at first, we, the building the grounds should sit down with that?
Okay. So, we are on to Facility Assessment Update.
Um, so we have officially contracted with Rugiano, um, for a, um, facility condition assessment. It will be, uh, taking place over the next, um, couple of months and we will have, well, not even, a little less than that, and we will have a, um, a, a full report back to us from the engineers and architect team, um, by December 28th, they are saying. Um, on November 6th, Terry, Chris and myself participated in a, um, kickoff call with the architects and the engineers. Um, I thought it went well, everyone shared the information that they had, we reviewed what the project needs to be and what it looks like, and the intent to prepare for a municipal bond in March. All the plans and specs, um, all the work that was done by the engineer, Mr. Hango previously has been shared for informational purposes. As best as management information has been shared, Terry shared, um, layouts for the school, we've shared all the plans. So, um, they will all be doing a site visit, um, all the architects and engineers that are involved will be doing a site visit on their own, um, at different times that will be arranged with Terry. And they will be having a internal meeting on December fourth to kind of problem solve and strategize. Then we will be meeting December, approximately December tenth to the fourteenth, again with our, um, with Chris and Terry and myself, um, just to coordinate um, before the plan and the report is submitted on the twenty-eighth, so I think we're on track. I'm very impressed with this firm and their attention and their organization, I can tell you they are very on top of things and very organized, um, so I'm hoping that comes, comes through with the report.
So, so, so our bill was, I think I missed the last meeting, so our bill was right where we, where we wanted it to be, or?
Uh, they, they gave us a bid for around fifteen thousand, but then uh, there was some language in it that uh, there could have been some, uh.
Timing materials.
Yeah, timing materials, up charges and whatnot, so we voted to put a cap on it at sixteen-five, and they agreed to it.
Is this a study for just.
The facility assessments, so they're gonna come in and look at everything, you know, roofs, uh, electrical, plumbing, every, you know, building codes, parking lots. Anything and everything that's on buildings and grounds, they're gonna come in, they're gonna assess the condition of the buildings and give us a recommendation of what needs to be repaired, and they're also gonna provide approximate estimates for doing the repairs in order to get us ready for a bond.
And that'll give you some ammunition for town meeting day.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It also protects us, so in case we miss something and everything works perfectly and the bond goes through, uh, if we miss something, it's not like we can go for a bond in the next year or two. So, we really should get it right this time.
I see, good idea.
They'll also be making some general um, repair and maintenance cycle kind of recommendations too, so it's a little bit even more broad than just preparing for the bond, it should, you know, kind of um, help us work through any other issues in the near future too.
PMs, I mean.
Anything else?
Do you have anything?
No, I, I like, I agree, the conference call went really well, definitely a lot of intelligent people, uh, very focused on this. It's uh, I hope it goes well.
So, so, there's a date that they'll come in and board meeting and sit down and talk to us?
Probably not.
No, I don't, I don't believe they'll come and talk to the board.
Okay, but, but they're, well, I, I'm looking back the way MVU did it, they passed out what they were gonna do and now.
The proposal will come to the board and the board can consider it, we can follow up with questions, I'm happy, you know, we can have a conversation, I can follow up with them, we can come back, it will all be
Right.
talked about with the board, I just don't think that team of engineers is going to come here unless we request that, and that probably would be an additional cost.
Right, but, but they will send, I guess what I'm saying is, when we get, they send a thing that, things that we needed to do.
Yes.
They have that list, yeah.
Just a whole report, yeah.
Usually pictured and everything.
Yeah, that's the way I know what MVU was.
It'll be pretty complex, yeah, yeah.
Okay, uh, on to old business, Act forty-six update. So, uh, uh, the state board has provisionally said that they're gonna force merge us, um, at the SU meeting last night, we discussed timelines, and I'll be honest with you, I'm still not comprehending it, so I'm gonna ask you to give the update on that one. I'm still trying to use my crayons to figure it out.
Oh, well, yeah, it's, it's pretty tight, we did it at the admin meeting today, um, maybe I'll see if I can find it. Obviously, I'm not gonna do the whole thing, but I can throw the picture up. So, it's not a great shot for the camera because my computer's terrible, um, but, the timeline, this is if there is, if the lawsuit doesn't go through and there's no injunction, okay? This is just the straight, regular process, um, the State Board of Education makes its final announcement, they have to do it by November thirtieth. I understand they've actually moved up their next State Board of Ed meeting to November fifteenth. I think they will likely vote finally there, that's what I'm hearing, but um, every time I hear something, then they change it a little bit, so who knows? We do know that by the thirtieth, they have to make their final report, that's in the law, oh, thanks Pat, that may help a little bit. Um, if there's no lawsuit injunction to stop us from November thirtieth, or whenever they make their final announcement, we will have sixty days to warn and hold an organizational meeting of the new school district. Uh, and you usually have the Secretary of Education comes in and opens the meeting, um, you have voters of the towns that come, just like town meeting day, and it's warned as a, it's a special town, school district meeting.
Would that be held at MVU?
Probably, I would think so, a bit, yeah, yeah, it's, it's the biggest space. Um, you then swear in um, temporary or transitional board meetings, you have the electorate that show up in the room, vote on whether you want Australian ballot or a town meeting style, uh, votes on things like the budget, board members, and other, any other ballot items like bonds or whatever that can come up. Um, and you then have to have, um, uh, the first transitional board meeting has to happen within fourteen days. Typically, it makes sense specifically how tight this timeline is, you'd probably have it right that night. Um, and the board would, the newly sworn in temporary board, um, that board's made up of two board members from Highgate, Franklin, Swanton, and the MVU board for the transition board, so there'd be eight people, it would be the chair and uh, one other member, um, the draft articles talk about the clerk, which was Ryan, so, but, the, they, they discussed at the last state board meeting that it might be just any board member, cause what if the clerk's really not available? Or, you know, so, it might be somebody else is interested, so we'll see what that determines. Um, that first meeting, you know, they really have to get moving, because um, their main job is to prepare the budget. They're not the board that adopts it, that has to be the newly elected board, that would happen after town meeting. So, they prepare the budget, they do any other business that's required to get the district ready. Um, they can decide if they want, Dave, you were asking, you know, do we have our own articles of agreement that we create? We can do that if we want, but you only have ninety days from eleven-thirty to get that done and bring it to the voters. Um, and you have to do that in a seven oh six approved way, which I think is proportional, so I'm not really sure. Um, so, this group would have to work really hard to weigh whether they wanna do something like that, um, honestly, I think that's easier if you're an organization that had a seven oh six committee, prepared draft articles, but maybe a vote went down, but you have them. Um, you know, we, we don't have any, the imposed, I think the, next month at the SU board, we're gonna look through the draft article, they won't be drafted by then. And that will, I think, help inform people as to what their thinking is and, and get a sense of what would be imposed on us. Easier, obviously, to get them imposed on us if we think we can, if they're something we want, it's got equal representation in there, so I think that's probably the biggest one for, for most voters. Um, and then you can amend them afterwards. So, without going too deep in the weeds with that, that's another piece of business in the timeline. The other major piece of work for the transition board is to then prepare for town meeting day, and that's where you would have the election of your new district board members, you would not be preparing the vote for the budget for town meeting day, because it's the elected new district board that adopts the budget. So, you'd have two people from each community, so it would, the transition board would be eight people, the actual elected board would be six. Um, they would have to meet as soon as possible after town meeting, because they're going to wanna adopt a budget. Um, ideally, you would want people that were involved in the preparation of the budget on that new board, if you had all new people, they would wanna, obviously, you know, they, they'd wanna get up to speed on the budget, which would delay how long it would take before you adopt, so, um, certainly, it's in the district's interest uh, and the students' interest to have a budget as soon as possible, so you would wanna warn that, you'd have to get, if you did everything pretty quickly, you'd be talking mid-April to the end of uh, April, um, before you could hold a special town, school district meeting to have a budget vote. Uh, and of course, then it would go, you, the district would go live and be operational July first. So there's a lot that has to be done in that short period of time, you add in there an injunction for the lawsuit, um, and uh, that could either mean that we can't do any of this at all this spring and winter, because an injunction would prevent us from doing any of these things. So, timing is everything, and of course, the lawyers know that, you know, they're um, gonna uh, file an appeal within thirty days. So, if, if, if a judge took it up and, and granted an injunction, we couldn't be doing anything. Um, so, there is also talk, uh, at the state board, they don't have the authority to kick the date out for implementation, but they could make the recommendation, and it has come up, uh, I mean, I did this work with a, with school district that voted to merge, wanted to do it, had been more informed about it, cause that was part of the process, and there was an elected transition board that had a year and a half to do the work. It was still a, a lot, so, um, as much as I'd love to stop talking about Act forty-six, and if we do have to do it, I think longer, we'd definitely make it a smoother process, that's for sure.
How do we go from uh, eight board members on the transition board to six?
Excellent.
Because it'd be the three, there'd be two board members from each town, MVU would no longer, they, they would be absorbed because it'd be the three towns.
Yes.
Okay. That's what I thought.
That's exactly it, it'd be two from the towns, but the transition board, they said a union high school board would be fine, that's just more hands in, in supporting the work, so. Um, definitely more to come, I think next month, we're gonna talk about the articles, the, the default articles of agreement, um, and examine them. I mean, there'd be a lot of work in um, communicating with the community about what all of these things mean. Um, especially since, if we have to hold a vote within sixty days, but whether we do Australian ballot, or whether we do a town meeting style ballot, that's a really big change for two out of three communities, and we'd have to really come up with, you know, scenario A, B and C, and how we would do it and present that information to people and, and be able to make a decision, because you wanna have really informed voters.
Voters are talking about, I've heard, I've heard a lot of it, the land, does it stay in Highgate, what, what do we have to do, is the board doing anything?
Oh, yeah.
Um, you know, where do we stand on that?
We can do, we can do things about that, we actually had a conversation, we'll probably talk about that later, but, um, when we were talking with the Franklin Northeast Supervisory Union, because, um, because of course Sheldon, their, uh, the proposal is for them to join a different school district, where they would be a K eight school choice district, um, and they were talking about, well, you know, about bonding and land and things like that, and whether you could or couldn't do it. This board has the authority to sell or transfer assets with voter approval, um, up until June thirtieth. So, this board still would exist till June thirtieth, and you could take care of those kinds of things.
So, so, do, do we have to sell it, or can it, can it stay with Highgate voters, you know, would it be part of the town, or?
We, we would have to do some formal sale.
Yeah.
Whether it's.
Or transfer of ownership.
Exactly.
To, to either the, the dual district, or it, it, it could be the town, or?
Yes.
Right, yeah, so, the default is that you, you know, the school property, all the school district properties transferred to the new municipality, the new school district, and everybody exchanges a dollar, you take on each other's debt, you take on each other's assets, like a big marriage.
Yeah.
But, um, if there's no reason why with voter approval, just like Franklin voted to sell to the town the athletic, the rec field and the walking path and the community garden.
So we could do the same with our.
You could do the same thing, yeah.
With our I P O, I guess.
Yeah, what makes sense to the board, yeah.
We could do that with the, the land the school sits on too.
Right, but now, Chris, is there, now I heard that there was a deadline, is that deadline, what's that?
Yeah, June thirtieth. June thirtieth.
June thirtieth.
I mean, we don't wanna wait till then, but we should, if we're gonna do something, I, I strongly suggest we have it for town meeting day.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Right.
But that's a lot of, now that the board is ruled, that's, now we can start working on that. Before, I, I wasn't in favor of doing anything yet, cause the board hadn't ruled, so we're making a lot of guesses of what's gonna happen.
Yeah.
I mean, technically, they still haven't ruled, we're, we're provisional right now, but, I mean, it, they're not gonna change their mind now.
Right.
Yeah, and, and you probably can't wait for the law, lawsuit to solve it, because that could take a year. Or it could take three months, and then you wouldn't have enough time to prepare for town meeting day, so, should probably talk about it pretty soon.
Yep.
So, I sat through the SU meeting last night and.
Enjoyed every minute.
Enjoyed all of it, yes, and uh, and my, back of my head was thinking this topic in particular. And seeing the full presentation that Julie gave last night, to expect that transitional board to even think about that property, they got way too much stuff that's gonna be on their plate that.
That'd be years.
This local board needs to do it before town meeting day, in my opinion.
I one hundred percent agree with you.
Oh, keep that in, make a decision what you're gonna do right here with the four or five members that you have on this board worrying about Highgate specifically.
Yeah. That's, the only other thing is, um, Sheldon and I, um, had a phone conference, we had to warn it as a meeting, cause everyone was gonna be on the phone with Secretary Dan Frank with the day after the decision of the state board about Sheldon, um, which is, was too bad, cause we wanted it to be before, but that's just the way the timing worked. Um, and it was, it was, you know, not a particularly encouraging call for, for those folks, um, but, um, it, they, he was definitely supportive of helping them and anyone else through this kind of, the technical part of how to go about it. Um, and one thing that he did say is, I think he agrees with the fact that it is gonna be a very tight timeline, and that they will be recommending to the legislature that they might move the timeline out to, um, the next school year, July twentieth. That's just people recommending, only the legislature can do that, cause the date is in the law, but, um, I, it, I did appreciate that he really understood how much there was to do in a short period of time, and that more time might be needed.
When would they make that decision, when, I mean, when's, cause they don't come back till January, right?
January, right.
So would it be like, to do number one thing, or is this gonna get dragged out?
It would have to be, yeah, because you would have, you would have to get it, a decision before we went and finalized our budgets.
Right.
So, I, I don't know if they have some, but if a litigation has an injunction which is delaying things anyway, then that could be a path. It's clear as mud.
Absolutely. I got all just one question on, on, I believe I read uh, a more uh, default for people who. I got all just one question on, on, I believe I read the, a more default for people who voluntarily. Uh, went into the merger um for articles of agreement. But uh, one thing that I read in it, and I, and I don't know if we currently have at Highgate is building use policy. Do we have a building use policy?
If you do.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
How we did.
Cause in there, it's, I think, like I said, I believe it's in their default.
Mm-hmm.
Um, for this, because pretty much all of them have the same wording.
Yeah.
That I read, um, states that they'll, eh, the building use policy that are currently. In place will last X amount of years, and in order to change it, you have to have X amount of voting power. I just wanna make sure we had one.
Yep.
Mm-hmm, absolutely do.
Um, that's all I have on the forty, I mean, we're, we're still.
We're not tired of talking about it, are we?
A while, getting there. Uh, next month, uh, uh, like Julie said, at the SU meeting, we're about to start looking at the drafts. Probably have a lot more discussion at this meeting too next month, uh, especially around land and what to do with it.
Yep, we should make sure that's on the agenda.
Right. So on to the Velco easement update.
So this has been an interesting ride. Um, we wanted to have a chat, um, there was discussion last month, and the reason why we weren't ready to vote on it last month. Is um, there was disagreement between the parties as to whether um, we were talking about getting more land or not. So if they were giving us money to expand the amount of property on the easement, then that has to go to the voters. And I said, you know, Rob came to us first once, and then before, before um. The meeting last week, I spoke with him briefly, and he assured us that the property size was not changing. That it had not been surveyed properly before, and that that would be part of it, but that it really was about upgrading the um capacity. And um, because it's a new company, making sure that it is updated and, and all of that. So it got kicked to a different lawyer, and then I. Was hearing from the Velco folks, but then all of a sudden, they said, well, you don't have a previous easement, it was never filed. You have to start all over again, and I said, no, they showed us nineteen sixties, nineteen eighty-something. Um, you need to push on them and check, and it turned out that Rob from Velco who came here is away. I believe he's hunting, and um, eh, the other person was looking at that town of Highgate versus the school district. And so they, they did a deed search, and they found it, and um, Rob will be coming back next week. And we'll be able to, um, one of the things I wanted to make sure, and I don't even think there are trees in our easement. But um, they were, um, it's kinda standard now in their standard language that they ask permission for burning and spraying chemicals. We're a school, we don't want anybody burning and spraying chemicals, so um, we're, they've agreed to get rid of that language, and.
There is some trees in it, oh, right down in there.
Okay, I, 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 I said I, I'm not the one who knows, but um, that language is getting cleaned up. And uh, the, we're in agreement now that it is not something that would need to go to the voters. So I think uh, we'd be ready to sign this pretty soon if the board wants to authorize the chair to. Sign it when um, Rob comes back and the documents are prepared.
So I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion.
I'll second that.
There you go.
Thank you, you guys are great.
Well, let, let, find a motion first, so entertain a motion to allow the board chair to assign the easement as long as the property. Boundaries don't change. So any discussion, ready to vote, all those in favor, say, by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
Onto the roof, the, the repair on the roof, the roofing is pretty well done, they're working on trim now, the actor. Had two days this week, but the weather was good enough, they could work, there's not a lot left, probably another couple days of good weather, they could finish. Finally, uh, while we're on the subject of the roof, the white building roof is started leaking. So. But this one's a, a flashing issue, and Terry asked me about it, I says, well, while we have Abe here, let's ask if he can fix it. The problem with a white building is you need a lift to get up there, so I was worried about how expensive the repair would be. And he talked to Abe, and Abe has to get a lift to do the town building. So he said, while he has the lift at the town building, he'd be willing to bring it over here and do a repair. So that might save us a little bit of money on the repair, it's a repair we still have to do, but.
Not to exceed the amount agreed upon for the repair?
No, we didn't do that, so I guess we probably should, I, the problem is, I couldn't even, I couldn't even tell you what that would cost, so I'll have to have Terry check with that.
What are you thinking, it's not gonna be too much, or?
I'm thinking fifteen hundred, two thousand at most.
Been a hole, it's not a large area.
Well, we, we gotta fix it.
Oh, I know, I'm just trying to.
No, I, it's not gonna be fifteen, twenty-five.
Alright.
Where's it leaking?
Uh, the, where the dormers stick out of the roof, in front of it, some of the flashings come off, and some of the shingles have blown off. And it started to leak there, it's leaking in one of the offices over there.
Definitely gonna need a lift.
Yeah. Or a jet pack, or something. Uh, so that's it on the roof, with any luck, the next meeting, we won't, we'll, we'll be telling you it's all done, and we won't talk about the roof anymore. Repair and, and this probably.
Oh, with the, with the amount of rain that we've got in, in the last two and a half weeks. We all good with what they've repaired for leaks, it was a pretty good test.
Knock on wood, we have no leaks in the new section of the roof.
Yay.
Yeah.
Pretty good test, dude.
Yeah, it was definitely a test, yep.
So, uh, this made me think of something, it, it, are we having any damage inside the school? Over the white building?
I don't know.
We should call in the other.
He said, Terry did say he went up in the attic, and he put some plastic to divert the water out to ease, at least so it's not draining into. To try to minimize damage.
Yeah.
Um, obviously, there's some water stains and whatnot, but it's not.
It's not bad.
It's not bad yet, but it's not gonna get better. So that's all I have on the roof, uh, we're on to superintendent's report.
So I'll just highlight a few things, um, I, you know, I like to have uh the updates from different departments in central office. So you can get a sense of the work that everyone's doing, I do say, we had wonderful open enrollment meetings. I wasn't able to come to Highgate's, um, uh, but I went to most of the schools, and I've never been at a presentation. For insurance where people applauded before, but I hear they applauded here. They applauded at MVU and in Franklin and Swan, um, the, the. Staff is just so pleased that we have moved to a new third-party administrator to um. Help administer the health reimbursement accounts, um, they're feeling pretty good about the new company. And um, they, eh, people were just really pleased, and I just have to say that Bonnie and Michelle and Puratt. Everybody worked tremendously hard on the process of identifying and narrowing down the, the, the best. Carriers to help, um, and even just deciding how we were gonna end with one company into another. Um, it's just been a tremendous amount of work, and I know that the teachers greatly appreciate it. I also just wanna, you know, I, I've got some stuff about Act forty-six and um, other things. One of the, one of the highlights for me so far has been the work with the administrative team. We meet twice a month, um, and just the opportunity to have. The leaders come together and work through issues and talk about, today, we talked about a policy. That came up in one of the schools where people brainstormed what they, talked about what they did, and let's build procedures together as a group. We've talked about issues of climate and culture, we have talked about um, how the initiatives in all of our schools. Are um, coming together and, and meeting best practice for, for teaching kids who struggle. Um, and we're continuing that work, it's particularly important considering that special ed uh funding. Uh, formula is gonna change significantly, so we really have to build our capacity and make sure we're doing things really well, so that. Um, we can be efficient as well as effective, um, we're, one of the pieces of work that we're gonna be doing is looking at. Not just questions and concerns about Act forty-six, because I, I really wanna be prepared to address. What paras are worried, worried about, what custodians are worried about, what the teachers are worried about, we can anticipate what Sheldon teachers are worried about. Um, they're asking us already, but we, we wanna not just worry about questions and concerns, because even when you have a year and a half to plan. There are still unexpected things that arise, but uh, in, in potentially a shorter timeline, you really wanna make sure. We're addressing people's concerns and figuring out the most effective way to solve problems, like. Servers and, and technology and people's Google's accounts if they are in Sheldon, those kinds of things, there, there's a lot of. Uh, small stuff that you don't get in a checklist from the state that you have to address. Um, and then I think the next piece of work around that, because it's just a really great team of professionals. Will be for them to develop what things we really, if we become a new district, would prioritize. What things we would really need to work on together immediately, and what things would be important to them. Um, and the school communities to work on over the next several years, because not, nothing, no, no organization comes together in a, in a heartbeat. Just because it's July first happens, right? So they're, I, I, I'm looking forward to working with them on identifying what their concerns are, but also what their. Thoughts are about what, what pieces of work we should tackle, um, they're just a tremendous group of people to work together. And they complement each other very well, so that's my update.
So we're on to new business, new board member. Uh, we put, we posted the, the position, and no one wanted to do it, apparently, so. I asked uh David Roddy if he would wanna come back to the board yet again, and I said, no. And he said. And I told him, I gave him the same speech he gave me, it's only one meeting a month, no big deal, it's a good learning experience for you. So.
It could be very temporary.
It could be very temporary. So if uh, the rest of the board is okay with it, uh.
Want a motion?
We would need a motion and invite Dave back.
I'll make a motion that the board accepts Dave Roddy back as a board member until February, is that what we, or March?
It's that, it's till town meeting, yes, it's till town, yes.
Town meeting in March?
Yeah. Would be the traditional town meeting.
You have to come up with two different.
There is an or, there is an and that comes to that, but, uh, let's not add that to the motion.
Yeah, I've got a feeling we suck at something. Okay, uh, all those, uh, any discussion, any, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries three zero, so welcome back.
Opposed.
So then there's, uh, because Ryan was our third Franklin Northwest supervisory member. Uh, now it's just Steve and I, so we need to appoint a new SU board member, which I guess since Richard already. Did it and uh resigned, I guess it would come down to Lisa or Dave. So who wants to be on the SU?
So I barely make it out of Burlington.
No, I'll be on the SU.
If you don't mind.
So I'd entertain a motion to.
I make that motion.
Except.
I'll second it, let's go. Any discussion? No, thanks, great.
So uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Wow, that happened fast.
That's two meetings a month now.
I know, I was on the SU meeting for ten fifteen.
Forever.
Yeah.
Um, we also need to appoint a board clerk, uh, cause Ryan was our board clerk, but I was thinking we should wait till Steve's back.
Yes.
Uh, we have a, at least five of us here.
Because also, if you wanna consider having it be Steve, it's not fair to do it when he's not here.
What are you talking about?
I mean, that's the way it works.
I always get assigned things when I'm not in the room.
Of course, there's a flip side to that, cause I believe Steve's the one that signed me up to be on teacher negotiations, and I wasn't there for it, so.
Daddy's true.
You know, there is.
Hey, tip for tat.
Right, but we, we'll, we'll put it on the December agenda that we'll point a board clerk.
Now it's all on record.
He'll watch it on the.
He'll watch it and he'll be like, dang.
So that's all we have for new business, we are on to uh executive session uh for. Uh, Acts forty-six litigation and uh negotiation update. So I would entertain a motion to go into executive session where premature public knowledge would clearly place the board and other parties at a substantial disadvantage. Switch it up, uh, discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.